Half a day. The Committee on Health, Land, Justice and Culture is now called to order. Today's Friday, June 10th. The time is 10:27 a.m. In compliance with the open government law, notices for this in-person public hearing were published in the Guam Daily Post on Friday, June 3rd, and again on Wednesday, June 8th, 2022. They were posted to the government of Guam Public Notice Portal on the same dates, and they're livestreamed. This hearing is livestreamed via the Guam Legislature's YouTube channel. Notices were also disseminated via email on those same dates to all senators and all main media broadcasting outlets. Individuals testifying shall first be recognized by the chair before speaking, and please begin by stating your name for record-keeping purposes. There's one agenda item, and that is Bill Number 248-36COR introduced by Therese M. Terlahi. It is an act to amend Section 81109 to renumber 8112 as 8113 and add a new 8112 all to Chapter 81, Title 10, Guam Code Annotated, and to amend Chapter 20, Division 3 of Title 26, Guam Administrative Rules and Regulations, relative to authorizing the Commission on Postmortem Examinations to create a fee schedule for services and establishing the Office of Postmortem Examinations Operations Revolving Fund. I'd like to acknowledge the presence of my colleagues, beginning with the Vice Speakers, Senator Tina Munya-Barnes and Senator Joanne Brown, and Senator Telatite Squeal is also with us today. As a sponsor, I will briefly introduce the bill, and then we will allow for testimony, and then questions from the senators to those on the panel. So, this bill was introduced in response to a request by the Commission on Postmortem Examinations on November 18, 2021, through its chairperson Attorney General Levin Camacho, who had sent a letter requesting that legislation be introduced to establish a special fund for the Office of Postmortem Examinations and to allow that office to charge fees for its services. In that same letter, the Commission also requested adoption of a fee schedule for body storage, morgue processing, human body transport, autopsy and non-autopsy reports, certification or verification, and other written instruments, and in-house photocopies. So I introduced Bill 248-36 pursuant to the request made to authorize the Office of Postmortem Examinations to impose fees and to establish a special fund so that any adopted fees will go to the OCME for its operations. The bill excludes the initial fees proposed by the Commission, but authorizes the Commission to proceed with establishing a fee schedule pursuant to the Administrative Adjudication Act, which will allow it to have its own public hearings on any actual fee proposals. The fees that were proposed, I just wanted to specify, are as follows. All right. So, body storage, which is for the storage of human remains within a refrigeration unit monitored and maintained by the OCME, morgue attendant, and GMH maintenance section. Charges will begin after 24 hours' notification of release either to the legal next-of-kin or assigned funeral home. So it's only after you're notified, after 24 hours after you're notified, that these charges will begin. The fee for morgue processing is the processing of human remains and all belongings for intake and/or release from the OCME facility, as well as maintenance of refrigeration units. It's a one-time flat rate. The, so the Attorney General, or the, sorry, the Commission on Postmortem Examinations had suggested a $45 fee be imposed, and for the body storage, a $38.50 fee per day after the 24 hours' notification. The third fee is for human body transport, which is transportation of human remains from the location of death directly to the OCME morgue. Currently, transportation of human remains is presently managed by the Guam Fire Department, and we've invited them to also be here today. And at such time as the OCME becomes equipped and staff, transportation of human remains shall be charged at a flat fee per case, and they had suggested $175 per hour, I mean, per case. Other fees include for copies of the postmortem examination report, for the first copy of an autopsy that would be free of charge to the legal next-of-kin, the investigating law enforcement department, the Office of the Attorney General, and government defense agencies, including the Public Defender Service Corporation. Additional copies after those three copies, including all other relevant reports, shall be provided at a fixed rate per copy, and they had suggested $35 per copy. Additional copies of non-autopsy reports, including all other relevant reports, shall also be provided at a fixed rate per copy, and they had suggested a $15 per copy fee. And then there, we are authorizing by this bill an electronic, a fee on electronic files, including compact discs, USB flash drives, of the autopsy or non-autopsy reports, including all other relevant reports, at a fixed rate per device. The suggested rate for this had was $5.50 per CD or other storage device. Off-island requests for autopsy or non-autopsy reports must be accompanied by a post-paged self-addressed envelope or a written authorization to transmit records by facsimile or electronically. All postmortem examination reports must be completed prior to release. No preliminary reports and/or incomplete reports shall be released. Verification of deaths, certifications of non-communicable disease, and/or physician certification requested by and issued to the legal next-of-kin or appointing person shall be provided at a fixed rate per original document. The suggested rate that we had received was $5 per original and $2.50 per copy. Additional copies of such documents charge at a fixed rate per copy. And finally, the in-house usage of a photocopy machine to copy and print additional sheets of a document shall be charged per page copied or printed, and the suggested fee for that was $2.50 per page. All right. So again, just to repeat, so the bill currently authorizes a fund, a new fund, for this Office of Postmortem Examinations. It authorizes them to establish fees and to charge fees and to deposit those fees into this fund, and it authorizes them to use the proceeds of the fund for in-house for its operations. And it authorizes them to establish by the AAA Act the actual fees that they will charge. All right. So now, we're going to hear testimony on the bill, and I would like to recognize the Chairperson of the Commission on Postmortem Examinations, Attorney General Levin Camacho. Thank you for being here, Attorney Camacho.
Thank you, Speaker. Good morning. Before I begin my testimony, I just want to reemphasize that I'm here in my capacity as the Chairperson for the Postmortem Commission. There's some perception that our office oversees this office. We do not. It's just in the absence of a chief medical examiner, a lot of the operational and these types of requests have come to the Postmortem Commission. On behalf of the Commission on Postmortem Examinations, I am submitting this testimony in support of Bill 248-36 relative to authorizing the Office of Postmortem Examinations, more commonly known as the Office of the Chief Medical Examiner, to charge fees for its services, adopting an initial fee schedule, and establishing an OCME fund. The Commission is in full support of and is grateful for this effort. However, we would respectfully request this version be amended or substituted with a version that the Commission adopted in September 2021 and transmitted to your office on November 18th, 2021. The November version is very similar, but the language is slightly more accurate, and it includes a provision adopting an initial fee schedule. Even if the initial fee schedule is not adopted, the Commission remains in full support of granting the OCME the authority to charge fees for its services and to have a dedicated fund to receive these monies. However, the proposed fee schedule in the November 2021 version permits the charging for services, including body storage, morgue processing, human body transport, autopsy and non-autopsy reports, certification or verification, and other written instruments, and in-house photocopies. These fees are based on market rates and are comparable, if not more affordable, than those charged at other local medical facilities, including GMH and GMRC. A common thread in our recent discussions with nearly all CME applicants has been the need for additional staffing and resources for the office. The intent of authorizing and adopting a fee schedule will help to achieve this while limiting the impact to the general fund. Under this fee structure, it is estimated the OCME will be able to generate between $80,000 to $100,000 annually. An alternative, and this is the first time we're presenting this, to authorizing and adopting the proposed fee schedule is authorizing the charging of fees to mirror the same fees adopted by GMH for the same services. We thank you for this opportunity and look forward to your favorable consideration. I do just want to add one more thing. During our last cycle of recruiting the chief medical examiner, we offered a base salary of $310,000, which would include, including benefits, would be around $400,000. That would, the total appropriation for the office this fiscal year is $423,000. So, salaries and benefits for the two doctors who were offered and who ultimately were able to decline and then withdrew their acceptance would have been $400 out of $423,000. So even if we were to get, the NMI has agreed to share some of the costs to allow for the services to be provided to them, but it's not going to be enough to support their operations and the two current employees. Thank you, Speaker.
Thank you, Attorney General Camacho. Excellent point about the appropriation and the amount that had already, that you have found necessary to operate this office. And thank you for doing the work in the absence of the chief examiner, chief medical examiner. I know that a lot of the operations work has come to you and your board, and so thank you, and to your staff, I guess, and so thanks to all of you.
Thank you. And I will want to say Johanna Bamba at the office has been instrumental. I mean, we cannot say enough how much she has kept that office running, and she is basically the only classified employee currently that's keeping that office afloat. So I do want to just recognize her. She had, she would be here, but she had previously submitted for leave prior to notice of the hearing going out, otherwise she would be here as well.
And she's in what office?
She is in the Office of Chief Medical Examiner, and I believe she's an administrative assistant currently.
All right. Thank you to Ms. Bamba. All right. So we also did receive, would you like to introduce those with you today?
I'm accompanied this morning by our Chief Deputy Shannon Titano, as well as Assistant Attorney General Janice Camacho-Perez.
Welcome. All right. And so we also did receive written testimony from the Department of Public Health and Social Services, and I wanted to just remind my colleagues that members of this Commission on Postmortem Examinations include the Chairperson, who is with us today, the Attorney General, the chief of the Guam Police Department, the Director of the Department of Public Health and Social Services, the President of the Guam Medical Society, and the GMHA Administrator. All right. And they had all been individually invited as well. Okay. And so, I know we have a representative from the fire department who, they are here to answer our questions, but would you like to say anything at first, or if you could state your name for the record for my colleagues?
Good morning, Madam Speaker. Chief Manabusa, Guam Fire Department. Do you have any questions?
Yes, if I could just, for the record, confirm also, we had asked your office, and we had received indication that, or if you could just tell us the charges that are, that GF Guam Fire Department currently charges for transportation of the human body from the place of death to the morgue?
Our current charges for any transport is $195.
All right. How do you collect those?
We collect them through the insurance companies or direct billing using LifeQuest. Payments can also be made at the Bank of Guam.
All right. And do you, you collect that after the service is performed?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Thank you.
And the money goes to the flame fund.
Flame fund? All right. We did also check with GRMC, and they said they do not charge for storage because the bodies are there for about three days and then transported to GMH for the autopsies. So they charge about $200 for the human body transport. We are pending responses from GMH, but I'm pretty sure you might have those in your file, and, but, so I did have some questions. So if you could clarify, I'll call you Mr. Chairperson of this commission for these purposes to reemphasize again that you are the Chairperson of the Commission, and that is your role here. So if the, none of these fees is for the actual autopsy itself. Is that correct?
I'll verify. I believe when I read through the schedules, mostly for the reports, if they're requested.
Right. They call processing, transporting, storage, but...
That's correct.
Okay. So, all right. And I guess my number one concern is just, okay, so we're gonna, if we're going to impose fees, I mean, I totally support, you know, granting the autonomy to the office, this office, so that it can build its capabilities to allow it, the funds for the increasing costs that we are seeing, especially to procure the chief medical examiners and staff and supplies. But my only concern is, so we haven't charged prior to this, and if we charge for these things, it looks like, you know, what are we going to do? One of the rules says that the bodies will not be released without payment of the fees. And has the Commission considered this, and what do we do with those who are victims, let's say, you know? We're talking about victims because a crime has been, they've been, let's just talk about if they've been murdered, they require an autopsy is, or, you know, they're found dead, an autopsy is required. These people have to pay to get the body released, and what if they're not able to pay? What do we do about that?
I guess, Speaker, the, well, we are, the government is charging for these services, just not the Office of the Chief Medical Examiner. I'm not sure if GMH has the same requirement that fees be paid prior to the release of a body, and that's why we're, if the legislature doesn't feel comfortable with the fees that have been proposed, and it sounds as though it's actually less than what GFD charges for transport and what GRMC charges for transport, just for equitable purposes to mirror GMH's fees. So I would, I know I spoke with the administrator of the hospital. She does plan on submitting written testimony, which will get into the fees that are assessed. I believe that we would want to make the same accommodations. Obviously, this is a tough time for people, that they've lost someone, wouldn't want to delay the release of a body based on the payment. But it, essentially, you have two morgues that are next door to one another, and one family is paying fees to GMH, and the other families are not paying fees. That's the current situation. So we're just trying to have some equity. And in addition, the money, I, we feel for GFD. I know that they have been providing this transport of bodies. They don't have, right now, there are only two funded positions at the Chief Medical Examiner office. So even if they were to get a vehicle to transport, you would be sending either the morgue attendants or the administrative assistant to do the transport. I know our plan has been to assist GFD or the hospital if it ends up with them for things such as entering into an MOU. So the intention is not to create hardship, but it is just to build some equity into the fees that are assessed.
All right. Are the human remains normally released to mortuaries?
That is, when you talk to, and we also hadn't anticipated before, the non-forensic autopsies were being performed pretty, is almost every day, based on an MOU with GMH. There's been a little bit more of a delay because we have to fly Dr. Dodderman in from the NMI. So we might, I think everyone would be open to having some kind of hardship provision where if the delay is attributed to the unavailability of a medical examiner to come in, as an example, if someone passes away, their body is stored on Monday, but Dr. Dodderman's not able to come in until the weekend, I think all of us would agree it's not fair to charge a family or a funeral home for those fees because the delay would be attributed to the chief medical examiner. But again, it's, it's hard to imagine all the difficulties until we have fees that are in effect, and then we can go through AAL and really refine and address some of the current situation that we have going on.
Actually, maybe you can confirm, but the way I read it, you've already accommodated for that, that if there's a delay, because I was thinking about that too, if there's a delay in getting that autopsy done, no, the fees are not charged until after 24 hours of notification of release, meaning when, when the chief medical examiner has determined the body's ready to be released, that's when the fees begin. So not prior, so our delay and government side, hopefully, can, will not increase their fees. And once they're notified, I guess they have an opportunity to reduce their fees because they've been notified and they can, they can make arrangements for the body to be removed. I, I, yeah, that's why I'm asking about mortuaries, because I want to make sure if these are going to mortuaries, that's the only, you know, link that they have to deal with is getting, once they're notified, they can deal with a mortuary to obtain the bodies promptly, so they don't not charge additional fees.
Generally, it is mortuaries.
Okay. Thanks. And so just, you'll get back to me as to whether, oh, no, you said already, we're not charging for autopsies. That's fine. Okay. So, do they charge these types of fees in other jurisdictions? I know you're saying GMH charges this type of a fee, but in other jurisdictions?
Yes. When they did the initial survey, Ms. Bamba again went out and she looked at other jurisdictions to find, to confirm that they do in fact charge for these services, and I believe the rates are also less than what she, you would see nationally.
All right. Do all bodies, are they all, human remains going to be transported there, or only those that require an autopsy? And if you could remind us, which ones are those?
Again, it's, I haven't looked, but I believe if someone is hospitalized and passes away in the hospital, they are handled by GMH. You indicated GRMC, similar, if someone passes away at GRMC, then they are transported to GMH. Anyone else who passes away is, will be transported to the Chief Medical Examiner office.
So anyone who passed away outside of the hospitals?
Of hospital care is, that's correct.
All right. And do they always perform autopsies, and those are only when, this is kind of outside the scope of the bill, sorry, but yeah, do they always perform autopsies, or I remember reading a statute where only certain times are autopsies required?
There is, well, forensic autopsies are only performed if there's basically a law enforcement interest for, and that's when we have the Hawaii pathologists that will fly out. For non-forensic autopsies, I believe the practice has been to conduct one on every, whenever someone passes away and there is remains there.
Okay.
So there is some form of autopsy done, and then it just varies in the amount of detail that's performed.
All right. If you could provide us with that survey or any other indication of other jurisdictions, kind of how they handle these types of fees? And then we talked about if, if you think we should make an amendment, because we are adopting rules in the bill as to, you know, what types of fees can be charged, if you think we should make any type of amendment for hardship or something, please submit that. I'd like to consider that. That's really my only concern. Otherwise, I agree with all of the intent, and the fees seem reasonable, even those that you've proposed, but I wasn't sure, yeah, how we, the ability of people to pay, and then this requirement that is written in here that before release of the body, release of human remains, fees must be paid in full. So maybe we need to add something to that language. And so the fees, if they're going to be used by the Office of Postmortem Examinations, it says for operations, does that include personnel? It includes the salary of the chief medical examiner and other personnel?
I believe that they would, the, and again, I want to speak for eventual chief medical examiner Johanna, I believe the intent is to have as much flexibility as they can, but the way they currently are budgeting, they have salaries and benefits, then they set aside money for contractual for the forensic pathologists, they set aside contractual for the locum tenens pathology. So even if it's not used for the salaries and benefits of the existing employees, it could be used to pay for contractual expenses, which end up being the bulk right now of the budget that's given to them.
And who controls that? Is it the Commission, or is it the chief medical examiner?
Well, it would be, so prior to Dr. Espinola retiring, he had the ability to enter into locum tenens agreements for, and I believe Dr. Dodderman was the recipient of that. So Dr. Dodderman, in the event Dr. Espinola was not available, would fly in to perform non-forensic autopsies. Since then, the Commission, it's fallen on the Commission to enter into contracts, and we were fortunate to enter into the contract with the two forensic pathologists out of Hawaii that have basically been in effect since 2019. But usually that would fall on the chief medical examiner to decide and to select a locum tenens pathologist.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. I'm going to open it up to my colleagues for questions. Senator Titigui?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good afternoon to the panel. Yeah, I was concerned too with regards to those with hardship, you know, and it'd be addressed. So, going to the body of the law, not the attachment, on page three, line one, where it says, "shall be appropriated continuously," what is your interpretation of that, that language?
That it would be an operating fund, that it would not lapse at the end of a fiscal year, so they would be able to use that for operations every fiscal year and be able to rely on those funds.
So, okay, so "shall be appropriated continuously," meaning that whatever's in there, I mean, it doesn't need the legislature to approve it, it just continue, you can continue to go in there without it being appropriated to you? Or does it say "shall," meaning that the legislature every year shall look at the balance and then appropriate it, or take an estimate and appropriate it? So your full interpretation of that?
I just, it would be a revolving fund. So the legislature obviously would always have authority over the fund itself and whatever funds are available, but in the absence of specific direction from the legislature, the Office of Chief Medical Examiner would be able to use those funds for operations.
Okay. Just want to verify. Also, the process that you're going to go through, you'll be going through the AAA process in order for these rules and regulations, is that correct?
We're hoping for it to be adopted through this legislation.
But you're not going to have any public hearings or anything like that for the community to be involved, to put their two cents into it, or anything like that?
And that's, if you look at the fees that have been proposed, they're less than what GMH, and then the alternative would just be to set whatever GMH is currently charging for the exact services.
So you don't plan on having a open forum?
We, we would, if this iteration of the bill is passed, we would proceed under AAL. That's correct. But the, the goal would be just to have fees that are set, again, so there's equity between, the morgues at GMH and the CME are literally separated by a wall. So we are hoping that the wall, on one side, there are no fees being charged, and on the other side, there are fees being charged. And we can go through the process to have it equitable so that it doesn't matter where, where your loved one passes away, you're going to be treated exactly the same. But again, if the legislature decides that it would want us to go and conduct an AAL on the fees, we can, it's up to this body.
You don't have, so you don't have an issue with that, at least having an, you know, You don't have, so you don't have an issue with that, at least having an, you know, a public hearing to allow anyone to come forward, you know, putting any of their comments or concerns with any kind of fee increase? Because this is the first time, I mean, this is something that nobody's ever had to deal with during, you know, time, trying time, difficult time.
I will say that this has been on the agenda of five or six public hearings in the postmortem commission. So the initial movement to assess fees started actually before I was the attorney general in 2018, in anticipation of Dr. Espinola retiring. So the commission met, it was an agenda item, it was discussed. In 2019, again, it was noticed, we had it as an agenda item, and including all the fees that were being proposed, and it was discussed. Again, in 2020, we, it was part of our meeting of postmortem commission. So I just want to, it's not that we've never talked about charging fees, or had the fee schedule subject to public review, it has been part of our agenda several times, there've been several hearings. And this, just this legislation, that's what we have requested, we considered it, adopted it, and requested it to the legislature.
Well, 2019, it's 2020 right now, so it is, there is a gap, and of course, a lot has happened, you know, in that timeframe, so just to refresh everyone's memory, or provide that, you know, opportunity for the public to come forward and talk about, you know, what they considered reasonable. I think that opportunity is there, and if we have to do it, then, you know, Madam Chair, to have at least a public forum to allow, you know, the public to come forward, and may comment on something like this, so.
The most recent, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, please.
We, this was considered and discussed on the agenda in September of 2021, most recently.
On the agenda, but it was a public?
Yes, it was discussed at the public hearing.
I didn't hear about it, so hopefully, the next time, if you do plan to make it public, that it's well advertised, you know, to the public, so they can take part in it. A lot of times, what happens is if people are not able to do it, as their senators, they call us, our office, and give us, you know, their two cents, because they can't make a meeting or anything like that, and it gives me the opportunity to provide your office the comments made from other constituents. So I don't remember hearing that, it wasn't really well-publicized, especially something like this. I mean, every family is going to deal with a tragedy in their lives, you know, and having to deal with, you know, the postmortem, the examination, as well as, you know, just the mortuary, it's just, it's a very difficult time, so. We have to be very, you know, very sensitive in this situation, too, as we, and I'm sure you guys have spoke about it, like you said, you've been talking it since 2009, well, not last time, you said was 2019. But I don't know if there's been anything, any update, other than this bill moving forward today, to provide any updates, you know, in the last two years. So, that's all I'm saying, and I'm glad to hear that you have no problems with having that type of forum, like you said, so.
And just to clarify, our commission is governed by open government, the same way this public hearing is being conducted, so we were required to publish notice of it in the newspaper, website, stream, and also have physical space available for the hearing itself, and the meeting.
Well, I'll keep my ears open, if there's something else you wanted to say?
Just that the, the same thing with open government, transmittal afterwards, and prior to, they've been complied with.
What is the situation now with the, behind the building of the Guam Memorial Hospital, where that's where the mortuary is, or the morgue is at, located? Is that building owned, is that rented, under the Office of Attorney General, or is it something that you don't pay any fee, or anything like that, for the use of that building right behind the hospital?
So the Office of Chief Medical Examiner is not part of the Attorney General's office. They, I don't, I believe, I don't see a, within their appropriations, I don't know if they own that building, I don't have that off the top of my head, but it would be paid for by the Office of Chief Medical Examiner.
It would be paid from them?
If there is rent or lease, it would be paid by the Office of Chief Medical Examiner.
Okay, and you don't know if they pay rent on that, or anything, on that office? To Guam Memorial?
It sounds as though, and I'm being, Assistant Attorney General Perez is informing me, there is an MOU that's between the Chief Medical Examiner office and GMH.
Okay, there's an MOU?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I'm going to do, okay. Is that MOU posted on their website, or is it something that we can get a copy of?
We can provide that to you.
Oh, I appreciate that, if you can send it to my office, I'd like to see the MOU between them, okay. So, okay, we talked about the, well, hoping it would go through a AAA process, you know, so we can get the public involved into something like this, but GMH building, line, okay, other than that, I really don't have any other questions, and appreciate the time that you've taken to be here, as well as Guam Fire Department to be here as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Brown.
Thank you, Madam Chair, certainly an interesting topic to talk about, the processing of a body, where you leave from being a person on the earth to a body, but, I mean, obviously, there are requirements that need to be put in place, but yeah, I mean, if, did you have any public participation or public input on these hearings that you mentioned occurred with regards to these fees?
We, I, we can go back and look at the agenda and see if anyone participated, but it's something that we've been very open about, we've been discussing for quite some time.
No, I understand, but I'm sure, once you implement it, I mean, if it wasn't there before, and all of a sudden, people are starting to, normally, sometimes that's when the complaints come, is once they're, you know, if they're finding something new has been added, I mean, we understand the need to do it, you know, and so as Senator Telemention, of course, when you're having to go through this process of the loss of a loved one, you know, I mean, law-abiding citizens normally will follow what's required and pay the costs that they need to, but it's just adding it on, it's just that, you know, this is the first time hearing about it, and certainly, I think, just so that the public's aware at a time right now, when obviously, everything's increasing all over the place, except drugs, you can buy crystal meth cheaper on the street now with each passing year, but I think that would be the concern also. I think if there was another hearing held, where there's, I mean, I'm sure as a result of this hearing, there would get, you know, greater public awareness about it, and what the fees are, and what's being charged with regards to this process. And of course, I mean, it's just a challenge also, because we don't have our own chief medical examiner full-time yet, after now going, I guess, it's almost three years, if not a little longer, right? You know, it's just frustration in general, because we're, we've always been used to the process that unless it's, you know, a crime committed, or whatever, as to why a body's held longer for further examination, I mean, our people were used to the whole process, that within so many days, you know, or immediately, I mean, even a short period of time after someone has passed away, you know, that you would be able to move them to a mortuary, and start the process of, you know, laying them to rest, and that process now has been extended sometimes two, three, four weeks, sometimes burials now are a month, a month and a half, sometimes even two months after the death of an individual, which is culturally and traditionally for us, has just been very extended. So I would, I would, I would think, Madam Chair, if another public hearing could be held, where this could be re-advertised to the public, I mean, if they want to come and testify, the opportunity's provided, if they don't choose to, then at least we have some comfort, that there's general public awareness of adding these additional costs. Understandable, I have no argument about the need for these charges, because obviously, it's a process that has to occur, and labor and time that's put into it, and the need to address compensation for it. But because it is a new fee that's being added to the community, I think it would be helpful if another, more advertised public hearing is out there, so the people can have some input with regards to it. With that, I otherwise have no.
Just to clarify one thing, Senator, so Dr., previously, the MOU with GMH, and this is to respond to the length of time it takes to have an autopsy performed, so for non-forensic autopsies, Dr. Dodderman's coming in every weekend, we've confirmed since the budget hearing earlier this week, that there is no backlog, that Dr. Dodderman is coming in routinely performing, so we have it down to about a week for non-forensic autopsies.
So now the timeframe has returned sort of back to normal, unless, of course, like I said, there's extenuating circumstance that requires further time?
When we were working with GMH, it was actually quicker, because their pathologist was performing non-forensic autopsies almost every day. And then for the forensic autopsies, two to three weeks is the typical timeframe that it takes for us to coordinate either Dr. Ishikawa or Dr. Lang to fly out to Guam. So the first month after Dr. Espinola retired, I believe was the longest, we had to wait, which was about 30 days, and that was because we had no contracts in place. But since then, it's been a week or two, there was a time when COVID first hit, and we had restrictions for flying into Guam, that Dr. Dodderman was not able to come in regularly, I think we had a charter of plane for him to fly in and work through those, so that was another time, due to extenuating circumstances, it took a bit longer, but we've been pretty consistent, every week, Dr. Dodderman flies in.
I see, so it's primarily then because of those issues, as to why the delays occurred versus the ability to be able to get them to come in and do the examinations?
That's correct.
And can you just quickly clarify for the general public, you know, what's the difference? What's a forensic, you know, examination versus, you know, someone dies from natural causes, or they're known to have had an ailment that they died from, and then, you know, normally, if they have their doctor there, it's very easy to determine, and that process is very short, but what's the difference between that and a forensic examination?
Thank you. So forensic autopsy is performed typically when there's a law enforcement interest, so whether it's potential for foul play, we've had requests sometimes for a forensic autopsy when there's a belief fentanyl was involved, and for additional reports to be performed, and other than potential for criminal charges, it's non-forensic, so a standard pathologist, someone without a forensic certification can perform those autopsies.
I see, okay, I just, just for the public, and for the Guam Fire, I mean, you've already met your obligation, once you, if someone has passed away, and you're, you know, you, they were at home or somewhere, and you bring their remains, then your job has concluded. That's the extent of what you have to do at this point?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much, Madam Chair, and thank you also, the Attorney General's staff, for coming in and providing testimony on this bill, thank you.
Madam Chair, if I may. I just have a follow-up.
Yes, Senator Brown, Senator Tietzke, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Chair, I'm going to call you, as we're, Mr. Chair, the funds that are generated from these fees is going to be paying for what?
It would be used to pay for operational expenses, I mean, just.
How much do you receive right now? Let me go there, how much do you receive right now from the general fund to pay for operational expenses?
The medical examiner, this fiscal year, received $432,000.
And that includes the salary, isn't it? Doesn't that include a salary for the medical examiner?
Yes.
Okay, so let's put that salary aside, okay, and how much for operational costs?
I don't have that breakdown in front of me.
Okay, let's, if I'm not mistaken, I believe you wanted to set aside about $375,000 for salary to bring in a medical examiner, and then I think you had to up that a little bit more, because competition was very, it was difficult to get a medical examiner here, you were competing with other states that were providing a larger salary, and I think, I don't know how we lost the last one, we almost had one here, but, so if I'm not mistaken, you're looking at about almost $100,000 for operational expenses? Does that sound right?
Again, I would have to verify, I believe most of the $432,000 appropriation is dedicated, well, traditionally would be for salaries and benefits, but because there's no chief medical examiner?
Right.
It's being paid for contractual for the forensic pathologists, and Dr. Dodderman and the MOUs at GMH.
Which is costing us probably a little bit more, I mean, having to fly in, you know, when it comes to anything that's on a criminal side, fly in someone from Hawaii, you know, medical examiner from Hawaii, than those who are just of natural causes from Saipan, we use a medical examiner there, which is less expensive, I understand that. But I just needed the cost of how much the operating costs, other than salaries, for the medical examiner himself, if we can get that number to find out?
We can get that, and I do, we have been trying to really work with Ms. Bamba, as an example, when, if, I invite you to set up a tour of the chief medical examiner office, if you get a chance, but most of their, when we came on, a lot of their equipment and supplies were basically things that GMH no longer needed. And if we're getting to the point where GMH is donating their equipment and their cabinets to the Office of Chief Medical Examiner office, their computers, so our office was able to secure a grant of about a quarter million dollars, the storage units, as an example, were probably from when the hospital was first created, I believe the morgue table itself is from when the hospital was, it's like from the 70s. So we've been working with the forensic pathologists who fly in, and I will tell you, the two staff have to, basically, for autopsies, lift the bodies onto this table, so one of the requests was to have a new table that would allow for it to go up and down, and you're not having to worry about a stable table and doing that. So we've been, we've been able to use that grant to upgrade a lot of the facilities, but that's something that they don't typically have funds for, for their equipment, internet, computers. So I can give you the operations that they've been spending to date, but basically, they've been using equipment and supplies that are decades old, and they would rely on this account to continue to modernize their operations.
I greatly appreciate that, if we can actually get the expenditures for FY21, for the medical examiner's office, as well as your current expenditures for FY22 to date?
We could do that, and we'll provide the grant expenditures as well, just to give you an idea of what we're, and one of the requests was to have larger storage facilities, as an example, right? Because the, yes, I'll leave it at that, so those are things that they've looked at, and based on recommendations to modernize our lab, that is a common, another, in addition to additional staff, modernizing the facility itself has been something that our chief medical examiner applicants have expressed concern over, and actually, the first applicant we requested, that was a point of contention he made in explaining his decision to not accept it, was that the facility itself needs significant upgrades, and testing capabilities need to be improved.
Okay, I appreciate that, also, just one more, with regards to the amounts that you anticipate to recommend on fees, I don't have a copy of that, did you, do you guys already have, does the Office of Medical Examiner already have a sample of what they want to charge? Like, for instance, my concern too, after the 24 hours, that was so important, yeah, I didn't, okay, it's incorporated here? Okay, I see. Because what I want to see is that, we come up, we find, oh, here it is, Exhibit, yeah, that wasn't part of it. Yeah, I see, I see. I didn't have that in the bill. One minute. Why isn't that in the bill?
It's not in the bill, Senator.
Oh, that's why.
Yeah, it was proposed fees to be adopted by statute, but the bill that I've introduced does not adopt, propose to adopt these fees, it just proposes to allow the office to use a AAA process to promulgate fees.
Would this, would this be attached, Madam Chair, to the bill itself?
Not in its current form, it's not, because Exhibit B's not being adopted, only Exhibit A, which lists the fees.
Okay, okay, thank you, thank you for that, I didn't see the schedule. I appreciate the answers to my questions, and thank you for the additional questions, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much, Senator. If I could ask just a couple more questions, so if any of you, does any of you know if GMH charges a transport fee? Would they be charging that type of a fee?
They would not, because they, you would be hospitalized before.
And, so either GRMC transports and charges, or GFD transports and charges, and that's it right now?
I guess to correct, GMH wouldn't charge for the transport of remains, because they don't, that would fall under the jurisdiction of the chief medical examiner.
Right, I mean.
I suspect that they would charge for just traditional transport of, an ambulance, as an example.
Oh, yeah, no, I mean, human remains. Okay, is that your understanding too, Chief?
Yes, ma'am, just for clarification, too, if we picked up human remains, let's say, a decomposed body, we don't charge for that. If we pick up a human remains from like a fire, fire scene, the human remains are transported using like a pickup truck, or an ambulance that's no longer certified as an ambulance, we'll use those type of vehicles. So we don't charge for the transportation of all human remains.
I see, all right, thank you. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Have the Office of Postmortem Examinations ever, or Office of the Chief Medical Examiner ever notified family of the release of the human remains, and yet the remains were not picked up promptly? Is this a problem?
Yes.
Yes.
It's happened.
Yeah, and so what would, what do you think the reasons are for that?
I mean, well, there could be, I mean, it would be hard to probably get into every situation. I mean, it could be an estranged family member potentially, it could be, it's going to be dealt with by a funeral home, so if they've secured the services of a funeral home or a mortuary, and then the family won't necessarily pick it up because they're relying on the funeral home to perform that and to do the pickup.
Are there any issues with funeral homes not picking up promptly because they don't have space and they want to use your storage?
I, we can confirm, but I know that there, there have been instances where a funeral home or a family has been notified that a body is available for release, and it's taken days for a funeral home to come and to have the body released.
All right. Yeah, I'm, yeah, I'm just trying to think of, you know, if the fees would be compounded and if there's any way for me, for example, to avoid incurring any more fees, how do I personally take, you know, a body out of a morgue? I don't think I would, except through a funeral home. Okay. I'm just trying to see if there's any way we can make sure that everyone on the other end is responsible and able to do that promptly so that these people do not incur any additional fees. Yeah, so in not adopting the fee schedule straight out, it's, yeah, I was hoping that the board would have its own hearing on the actual amounts to be charged so that they could justify. What you've told us today is that these fees are reasonable, they're market rates, they're, they might be less than what is being charged currently by other entities, and, but I had no evidence to prove that myself, and I felt like the board could much more adequately justify that. But I do want to ask, are there any other entities involved that we haven't spoken about? Are there any other medical offices that might be charging these types of fees besides GMH, GRMC, and the Fire Department?
Not that I'm aware of, and we can confirm with Ms. Bamba if they, I mean, I don't know if Naval Hospital.
Say that again?
Naval Hospital, I don't know if they have any similar types of fees, we haven't checked with them.
You do not know?
Not off the top of my head.
Okay. All right. Yeah, because it says the fees are based on market rates and are comparable, if not more affordable than those charged at other local medical facilities. I wasn't sure which medical facilities were all involved, I was able to check GMH and GRMC briefly and Fire Department, thank you.
Sorry. Speaker, do you want to finish?
Go ahead.
Ms. Bamba, she looked at coroner offices and doing her research across the country also to compare what was being charged here to what was going to be proposed.
All right. This is cut off, but this is, this is from GMH, and so they are, they gave us a copy of some fees, only two fees that I'm finding here, and that is a morgue fee per day of $23.07 and a morgue processing fee of $77.57. They have, it says autopsy complete, which looks like it's over $1,300, and an autopsy, well, they have a fee. I have to get clarification because this page is kind of cut off and it was just provided to me right now, but.
They probably have a reason.
The path, and I guess that's, yeah, that's where I felt like the commission, you know, if these fees are going up and down and the other agencies, the commission, you know, has the ability to control that more, going up and down in comparison. I don't know if we're trying to be less than every other agency, or you're trying to meet costs of your own agency or office, and, but, yeah, and I am concerned about what do we do about those who cannot pay, even with their best efforts, and can't get the bodies out for funerals, and then just, that just adds to the stress of it all. So if there's any proposed language for that, like an exception or for hardship, please submit that. And if you have any of the other jurisdiction, that comparison that was done for the other jurisdictions, I'd like to see that. And also, if you have schedules of fees from the other agencies, I would just like to see that as well. Otherwise, thank you, all of you, for your testimony and for the work that you've done in this regard. Is there anything else you'd like to add?
No, Speaker, thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you so much. We will conclude this hearing. It's 11:23, there's no more, there's no additional testimony to be provided, so we will consider Bill 248-36 duly heard, sidos masi.